... Scotty Community Schools in his partnership with parents, students, and the community is committed to educate students to become skilled, knowledgeable, and responsible citizens in a global society. Notice that the meeting was given in advance according to state law by giving notice to the meeting to the public. Notice that this meeting was also given in advance to all members of the Board of Education. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Brian's not gonna make it.
This meeting has been preceded by advanced notice and is hereby declared to be an open session. Copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in the front of the meeting room. I will entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Any thing to draw up?
The bills in here to be paid this, in this meeting is a special meeting of the board, but it's the last meeting of the year, and so this is where we, if we underspend our budget, we could transfer money into funds like the lunch fund or the activity fund. In this case, two funds that we did transfer money into, we transferred a hundred thousand into the depreciation fund. That fund is a fund set aside for large-ticket items like computer technology, automobiles, carpet replacement, roof replacement, any kind of replacements that we do in buildings that aren't new construction. So that fund allows us to be able to collect money in it. It's got a balance of about three hundred thousand in it right now, and so this will give us back to a hundred thousand in each one of those areas that we normally would try to support additional purchases or large-ticket purchases. We pre-play, we use the rest of the money to prepay expenses for next year so we could freeze our budget. And so you'll see from last year's budget to this year's budget that we have the exact same budget. Even though you have a four percent increase across in salaries, which make about eighty percent of your budget, we're able to make this budget work and which after this, we'll do a budget workshop, but you'll see no tax increase. We promised our taxpayers that when we went after the bond, and so we're able to make that work for this year. So excited about how we're ending the last year with somebody to transfer and prepay the bills. So there's, I'm not sitting here, we can have a much tighter budget if I don't have those bills in next year.
So everything gets through this year? Any questions? Go ahead and call the roll.
Robert?
Yes.
Lenusa?
Yes.
Zach gone. Hernandez?
Yes.
Simrad?
Yes.
Four zero two.
And I love the fact that, you know, we changed the meeting agenda so that we always have big crowds. No, but it's great to have a lot of students to recognize. Glad that everybody that could be here can be recognized tonight. So I will turn the, this portion over to principals for this process and.
Honoring tonight is the academic achievement for all A.A. honor roll from last quarter of last year. The board can stand up and stand along the table, can shake hands. Staff of Daniella Alkon. Daisy Angel. Salmy Bartolo. Crystal Correa. Alejandro Castro. Well, Sam Cristobal. Megan DeLeon. Marcel Deanda. Jose Guzman. Easton Hall. Mullen Haley. Ashley Hernández. Haley Kovar. Caitlin Clumber. Aaron Langemeyer. Brenda Lara Ronald. Jacqueline Lopez. Natasha Mukulon. Kevin Sada. Pedro Ramirez. Hannah Rushford. Kurtie Ruiz. Dan Seer. Vanessa Serrano. Jessica Sorsen. And Guadalupe Velasquez. Altogether, there's thirty-two students. It's one of the showings of academic achievement. Appreciate all your work and hard work here. You don't have to take the lead.
We weren't looking for committees tonight.
We're gonna mess up our meetings, David.
Thanks for coming, Dan.
You could've walked off for him.
Congratulations.
I'm sure he can hear it. We're gonna try. Well, it's always nice to have those positive moments, you know, shared on the public forum. Again, lots of good students need to celebrate the successes when they hit those high marks, so that's, that's wonderful. So, um, let's see, where are we at here? Inter-local agreement?
Make the motion to approve an inter-local agreement with the City of Skyler.
I'll second.
They moved and seconded discussion.
This inter-local agreement came at the point in which negotiations between our several engineers for this project of the new construction and the city were trying to work out the best way for us to reroute a storm sewer that takes about forty blocks of water from straight west of us and north. There's forty blocks that run into our front door, and we needed to move that storm line from underneath the building. And the city's engineers wanted an elliptical pipe because of the depth of the pipe, that they could get more slope rather than if it's a round pipe, it can be buried as deep because of the height of the pipe. So this elliptical pipe would carry more water, but it would reduce the slope because we'd have to run around the building. They never liked the proposals from our engineers and the city. We went around and around. I gotta tell you that I've not seen this kind of cooperation out of a city or out of municipal department where they came back with a solution that's better for us and better for the city. And in this solution, it, they agreed that this new storm sewer not only would help us, but would also help them. And so this inter-local agreement is an agreement that we would pay the price for the original from what our people estimated in this project. If we paid that, they would pay the difference. And so they will take the big storm pipe and run down the west, east side of the soccer field where we already have a drainpipe there. But this will be a huge drainpipe, and it'll run all the way to the creek. So they're gonna run not only across our property, but they're gonna extend it all the way to Lost Creek and help the whole water situation in that. They're gonna then abandon our, our storm sewer from underneath the building, so we'll let it go until they get theirs in. Because they were gonna, if we had to order the pipe and put it in, it was gonna back our project up ninety days at a minimum and until that pipe got put in. And this allows us to go ahead and continue, so we'll start this week. We'll still keep that storm, storm sewer until theirs comes in, and then we'll abandon it and fill that pipe, and we'll get to use it for our own storm sewer. So all of our new runoff will go into that big pipe that was carrying forty blocks. Better for us, better for the city, and the school district could've had a million-dollar cost in there. But it's two-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand, as you saw in the inter-local agreement. And so the city stepped up. The city and, and Jim McGowan's Municipal. Yeah, Department of Utilities. So I don't know what it will take, but thank you for the cooperation because they saw a chance to improve themselves, and they also saw the only way we could move forward with our project under this kind of arrangement. So, and we, we got the best solution for both, but not without a commitment from them. So what this inter-local agreement does, if you read through it, it allows us to partner on the storm sewer, and we would have no more costs than what was in our bid proposal. So they don't have full numbers on their stuff, but, but I can just tell you that without their help, there's no way we could have done that.
So beings there picking up the cost for whatever's beyond what was in our arrangement with the, with the, I guess, so why is the, why is the agreement needed?
Because when you go into a cooperative venture, the advantage is that it allows us to cross over where I can put money into their sewer line, they can put money into ours. Okay, so it's a joint venture to do this. Also, anytime that we would give them a check for that much money, it affects their budget, and they can put it in a co-op fund so it doesn't affect their budget that way, same as us, you know? If we receive money from anybody and put it in our general fund, we lose state aid. Okay, well, they run kind of the same way that we do. So having an inter-local agreement allows you to create the co-op fund like we have and to be able to share funds on joint projects without negative consequences.
I kinda was thinking that, but I wanna make sure, as a new board member, I wanna make sure that's the reason we do that. So, and I knew you could explain it much better than I could, so.
Yeah, I'm not sure, but anyway, I don't know what we do besides sign, sign this, but this is a huge thank you. Because it, it not only is a commitment, but it's dollars, but it's dollars that help us move forward, but also improves the flood situation in this quadrant of the city. Because you know, like I said, there's forty blocks of water running into a forty-eight-inch pipe, and in a flood event, it's, it's not gonna carry it fast enough. And if the, if Lost Creek is full, it's going nowhere anyway.
So are they, they'll just go straight, straight south through the field there?
Our, our current, our current drainage system on our, on our soccer field goes to Lost Creek, but it's a small pipe.
Right. I know, I mean, as far as the path, actually, there is, so it doesn't.
They'll take that storm, they'll take that pipe out and put a, put in a new elliptical pipe.
How big will that pipe be?
Fifty-four inch, and then they're working with JEO, but I think that somewhere down there by the softball fields, it goes from fifty-four to sixty. So they're looking at sizing it up as it gets closer. And so there'll be a lot of underground storage. What, what we really tried to wanna avoid was having to have surface retention, because our, our groundwater level is so high that once you dig a retention pond, chances of that thing ever being dry is it's a mosquito breeding pit. And then if you have, if you have any size rain and those things fill up and spill over, surface water will run wherever. So if it runs up to somebody's back door because of our water, and this way, all of our, all of our water will be underground retained and not on the surface. So it's, it's a huge.
It'll just be the one pipe now. It won't be multiple pipes. It'll be just the one.
It'll be one, but then we get to keep the forty-eight inch that's already there, because that's where our water will drain into. So we aren't even gonna go into that pipe. So that's a lot of underground storage for us coming off a parking lot in the building.
No doubt.
And then there, there's a couple of things that we have to, they're trying to work out right now about how sewer lines cross and it's, one of the things that will happen is that we will have to run a new sanitary sewer from the, from the activity building, but we're planning on that anyway. But it'll be affected by that, or that'll be affected. But that building is such poor drainage right now, so that's in the budget to replace that sanitary sewer line. So, so anyway, it, probably too much information, but at least you guys will see, city stepped up big for us. City and.
So they actually have the pipe already and, or they still have to get it too, but they have better access?
No. They're gonna try to get the pipe in as soon as they can get it in, as soon as I sign this agreement, or you sign this agreement tonight. It could be ninety days before they get it, but we're gonna build over top of this pipe. So they're engineering right now to make sure that we can set walls and footings on top of this pipe until it gets filled. And so they may have to bridge over it, beam it, and make sure that it, that can support the foundation and the walls. And then once, once they get their pipe in, we can slug this one and fill it. Okay? So, but they're engineering the, the bridge over that pipe to make sure that it'll carry that weight. So this thing could continue to flow water like it is until the spring, if they can't get that pipe in and get it in the ground. But if we would've had to wait ninety days, it would've put our project probably a year behind.
Yeah.
Okay, so I, I asked Clay, with this, are you gonna be here this week? Sorry, we're taped.
Yeah. And so, what did he say? Since you asked a question?
He said, "We're gonna, we're gonna make sure that we're on site." That's what he said. He didn't tell me he was digging.
And again, since you, since you brought it up, and, you know, people definitely are asking about things, and, and so what can people expect to see happening first?
The first, the first thing will be the over-escavation for the footings so that we can get the footings in the ground, and then the plumbing that has to happen where it affects the footings. It doesn't have to happen all the way across the building, just where the footings are affected. And then once they get those footings poured, really, because they just gotta be ready for the walls when the walls start coming. So that part of it's not delayed. It's just this part here that they have to prioritize what they're doing and how that.
How they're gonna work around it.
Yeah, yeah. So I think at our next construction meetings, as we talk, there's something in the timeline, but as far as us pushing back the cafeteria and that, we told them, "You can't, because we're starting a new school year. We're counting on that being ready." So that part has to be done. But we're gonna work with them and negotiate a little bit. If we can push part of that theater ahead, which is what we would like to do, get that stage so that we don't lose it for the whole next fall, and if we can get that stage done. So we're gonna negotiate a timeline that we'll trade off something out there for something in here, that they can start in the second semester a little bit on some of the stuff that maybe we can do here that's not too intrusive. So we're gonna try to keep them on, on track as best we can, but we just gotta see something start happening out there, so.
Yes, I agree. The other questions are with regard to the agreement? Let's call the roll.
Liza?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Simrad?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Four oh two?
Board meeting and hearing.
Okay, Penny asked me before we even take your motion, she talked to me about the board meeting that falls the immediate Monday after Labor Day, and when it falls on the first of the month, it's difficult for her to get anything from the banks that week to get finished. And it's pretty important that we have accurate numbers at the end of the year for our audit. And so our budget has to be submitted by the twentieth of September. So we can move that September meeting back a week, go on the sixteenth, and make sure that we do a good job of closing out that year. Of all the months, this is the most important one for us to have a clean audit. So we get our bank statements right. So if you're okay with that, then you could entertain a motion. How does your schedule look? Because we gotta make sure we got people at that board meeting, because it's two hearings and a meeting. The hearings generally don't take that long, but it's just, you gotta adapt the budget.
Any concerns for you? Minor, any concerns in there?
Sixteenth.
Think I have anything.
Just a week later.
Yeah, it looks fine.
Okay. Okay, then you need a motion.
I'll make the motion to move the September hearings and board meeting to Monday, September sixteenth, twenty nineteen.
I'll second that.
Any, I don't see any reason why it shouldn't work, so. And is Chuck gonna be gone for a month or again, or?
No, no, that. Okay. This was the only meeting I think he was gonna miss, but. Call question?
Yep, call it.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Simrad?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Lenusa?
Yes.
And Meesha's gone. Four oh two?
New hires. I would move to approve the new hire recommendations as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, discussion.
I know we have one more hire. Steven, are you full up here? Everything full? Okay, and we have one more pair at the middle school position that will fill yet. And I talked to, to Mrs. Burton today, and she has an interview Tuesday and Wednesday, or Wednesday and Thursday this week, so hopefully then we're full. I, I will say this, I talked to Dr. Leftall today about, about newcomer program, ELL at the high school, and those classes are getting pretty big with twenty in each class, or his numbers are hovering around that twenty, twenty-one. That's pretty big for new learners. So we're gonna have to watch this and see our success rate in there, and if we have to do something, we'll, we'll figure out some way for us to be able to serve those kids. But putting them in a big class, we gotta keep those numbers a little lower than that in order to help those kids. So we, we've got a batch of new kids this year again. I don't know what our new numbers are, but.
Six today.
Six today, so. And usually it's until Labor Day or so that our, our numbers keep coming. So, and in the September meeting, I will give you where we're at with counts in all our buildings at that point. I don't have them today. But that's a, that's a program that we're gonna have to make sure that we get these kids off on the right foot.
So those six today, are those are all newcomers, or those are just six new kids and some of them are newcomers?
They're all newcomers.
This is not unusual. This is what I said, so Labor Day, Christmas Day, consistent.
It's just, just unusual that we have so many newcomers with the kids that we've had who are level one or level two. And then the numbers just keep growing in there. But the one thing I will give these guys credit on is they aren't putting kids in classes that they can't be successful in, just to fill a schedule. So we're doing a better job of that, making sure kids get into classes. And there's still maybe one or two who wanna try that, and we may have to move around, but we're not gonna have huge bunches of kids that are slow in classroom time because they don't have the language yet, you know?
So, that's great, and that's good to hear. And I know, like I said, with the, we have the after-school program at the elementary and middle school. Do we need to be looking at something that, of that type at, at this level? I'm just.
We, we've got the online program, and we've got tutoring, and we've got, we've got, all day long, we have one room that's, that's called the intervention room, where kids can go get help all day long, because they won't stay after school. They go to work, or they, you know? So we've gotta provide intervention.
Yeah, there's different.
And we can get it here at the high school. So we do have an intervention room, and it's, it's really designed after Norfolk Highs. They started about ten years ago there and to try to make sure that kids get the intervention and leave before they get behind and give up. So we do have that room here. It's run by Scott Peterson, and he's got a group of people who work in different languages, so.
And so then there's two other staff members in the newcomers rooms and?
Yes, really, two and a half right now with Brandy. So we have two and a half. And then we have a newcomer program that, that we haven't had before to try to get these kids up to speed quicker. So, so Brandy's working with a program called Elevation.
So were this six new kids to the state's education mixup?
That's not unusual for us, though, to get groups of kids.
I'm just curious, because, I mean, we could have some, you know, transfer some other states, towns or something.
They're, they're level one or two kids, so they are, they don't have language yet. One, they're all, they were all level one kids, so that's. But, you know, I got a call from a superintendent who said, "Hey, I got a student who doesn't speak English." That's a huge problem. You got, you got a thirty cent tax. Really? Okay, tell, tell me your problems, okay? I really was a little more sympathetic for that, but I thought, you got one, okay. But, you know, so it's, it's, it's a big deal for those people, but, you know, we could say we got six, or we got ten, or we got a hundred, and these guys deal with it, so.
Probably is something that it needs to be shared with the community, you know, like, because it's, it's easy just to criticize, but, you know, seeing the situation and that we're, you know, like, we have to be proud of our schools, that they are welcoming, that they overpass all these problems that comes, you know?
It's kind of a two-edged sword, because some people don't necessarily like that we have to deal with it. So we have to be kind of careful about how we use our kids out there to promote. But I'm with you. I'm proud of the work that we do with those kids. But for some people, they say, "See, they're costing my taxes to grow up." No, we get mine to help us support in most cases, you know, so. But it's pretty hard for them, you know, you see the people who come for the budget workshop. And that doesn't mean that they like their taxes. I'm promising you, it's, you know? So I, I'm with you. I'd, I'd like to do whatever we can to promote it. It's just that the people who don't like it are gonna use it, you know? Unfortunate, but. Okay?
Well, thank you so much for all the things that you guys do for our new kids.
So new hire recommendations. Simrad?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Lenusa?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Four oh two? Okay.
Budget documents.
Okay. For those of you who are here, if you wanna pull up around the tables, go ahead and pull up, because then we'll just give you the same documents as we go through. I should die throughout this full year. You got capable people who can carry it on? How's that? I'm not playing on it, but who knows?
I don't know if that means you had a director.
Probably. Rich, do you want to sign these two copies? And then you have these. I have three of those back, so you'll sign those. One, two, three, four, five.
I would like one too, please. Thank you.
Rich coming at you. If you need pencils? Mr. Graham was the keeper of the pencil? Someone at you, Rich. I'm throwing them right there.
He must be a quarterback.
Or the center. You should see me if I could do those between my legs, if I got it.
I did that too.
So Virginia, have you ever seen a staple of staple?
No.
Isn't that cool?
That's very cool. That's very cool. How do you, I mean, it's actually just a little stapler that does it that way, huh?
Yes, that's just a crimper.
That's really neat.
So, so you can pull them apart?
Right, right. So is it, uh, is it like as sturdy as a staple is? I mean, like, you really have to pull hard to? You're training on him, huh? Well, you don't get poked anymore, taking them out. You can send it to a copy machine.
Chipping his nails.
Is this a printer that does this, or?
Yeah, a copier.
Oh, it's a copy, yeah.
Just have like a little corner that you like to.
I've never seen this.
Virginia, you want to sign these? Do you defend?
I do.
This is a senate hearing. Grill Steven. We are still in the meeting, just so you know that, so.
Okay, you two need this, I think. Summary, we could also be, uh, valuation. Okay, so the first document that we're going to look at is the budget document, okay? I just want you to be able to compare. Okay, so it's this one. It says notice of budget hearing and summary, okay? Notice of budget hearing and summary. We're just going to look at three columns because every, all the worksheets that I'm going to have you look down is the, it's the three columns that make those up, okay? So the first column is an audited column, and so that's actually what you spent. So if you read at the top, it says actual dispersments and transfers. These numbers came off our audit. And so obviously, you try to budget more than what you spend in the end. So the first budget row is actual, and then budgeted, budgeted. It says actual on there because the only thing we have to carry forward now is our actual cash balance from the previous year off the eye. Otherwise, everything else is still budgeted, okay? So you'll see our budget in the general fund for next year, twenty-one, four, same as last year, twenty-one, four. That was your amended budget, and we talked about that, okay? Um, eight hundred and fifty thousand in depreciation. Um, you'll see from our sheets after a while, we don't have eight hundred and fifty thousand, but the budget is there. Should we have to transfer money and cover some, like if we had a, something go bad this year, um, we could use that depreciation fund to help support that. Employee benefit fund. We actually will spend somewhere between eighty-eight and a hundred thousand um, for employee benefits that come out of here, because it's a revolving fund each month, and money comes in. Activities fund. Our budget has been close. We've had more kids involved in activities. We're generating more money in it. And so your budget will be reflective of the dollars that you have in your fund. So if we think we're going to have this much money, I have to have a budget that balances, okay? We're not, if the federal government did that, we'd be in really good shape, okay? But they can deficit spend, they can, okay? And they have to approve a, a limit, but the next one is lunch fund. The only reason why that budget went up wasn't because we were spending it, but because we have this much money in our fund. And I have to have expenses across from it, okay? The state might not like that big a balance in there. Usually when it, when you get your lunch balance too much, the state says, what are you doing? Well, we are going to be putting in a new kitchen. So even if we don't spend it on it, there's some things that we can use that money for in support of that food service, okay? We've been pretty lucky in that over the last several years, Marlene Hartman has written several food service grants for us. Probably in the neighborhood of fifty thousand dollars for equipment. Um, she just wrote one for new lunch tables at the middle school. She wrote one for new storage or heating things for all the buildings. She's put a new salad bar in. So she's written a lot of grants for us. So instead of spending school money on our food service equipment upgrades, those grants have really helped our budget balance go, because we're not having to use that money for that. Um, bond fund. We, we had a bond in there that we've had about five hundred thousand, but remember when we, when the bond passed, it doubled. And so that bond will double. But we have a thirteen million dollar increase in the building fund in the next line. But no tax in that one, because the money's already sitting in the bank, okay? So I'll show you on your other sheets. Qualified capital purpose. Um, each year, we get about five hundred thousand more in there because we have a balloon payment. So it's going to go about five hundred thousand a year. And then your last two funds take pretty soon. We have more, more money in our student fee fund, so I have to balance it. If you turn it over on the backside, this, but this, I, it has changed. Up at the top, you'll see that our valuation now is, is on this notice. And you'll see the valuation from one year to the next. Um, I, I gave you evaluations. It looks like this, this sheet I just gave you, okay? Here's your valuation from the, from the three counties, okay? Um, Colfax County went up about four and a half million. Butler County went down six million. And I don't know why, because they don't tell you why they go up or down, where their valuation changed. But I'm anticipating that the land south of the river, which is not farmable right now because of the waters, I'm thinking that that land is probably revalued for taxes right now. And that's probably about a six million drop. Okay? Saunders went up a fraction. I mean, we get a few hundred thousand from them, but so you'll see that there was, from last year to this year on that, it was a million three ninety-eight. Now it's a million three nine four, so about a million and a half, which is the difference between Colfax and Butler Counties. Okay?
Yeah, that's about as close as you're going to get it from year to year.
Yeah. When I saw the six million dollar drop, which could be a little bit of an impact. Um, so down below on that, you'll see this is what our budget was last year. This is what our property tax request was last year. This is what our, our tax rate was. Okay? Based on your new valuation with the same tax asking, it went from a million or from one point one three six to one point one four seven. Okay, does that make sense? Okay, about a penny? You'll see the same thing on the other funds. You asked for a five. Your budget was five seventy-five. You asked for five oh five in all three of those funds, which was three point six three cents. And you'll see, based on the new valuation, that's what it would be. So going across the general fund, you're at one point one three. We asked for exactly the same dollars. And you have one point one four, okay? And look at those funds going down the page, and when you, you'll see we have no tax request in the building fund. Okay, we got thirteen and a half million dollar budget, but no tax request. Okay, because we already got the money. But we did double our money, our tax request in the bond funds. Because when we put all those bonds together, you know, obviously, that's where we're taxing. If you look on the bottom, we asked for fifteen million, six fourteen, four seventy-nine. We asked for the exact same amount. I'm going to give you some correspondence right now. Last year in the legislative session, LB one oh three was passed. We have always done this. We've always advertised, and we've always had a resolution. But in that first paragraph, it says LB one oh three was one of the first bills signed into law during two thousand nineteen legislative session. Under LB one oh three, if a school district or educational service unit will collect more property taxes in the following year than it collected in its current year, and the school district or educational service unit must follow the requirements of LB one oh three. When does LB one oh three apply? If a school district or educational service unit seeks to collect more in property taxes than the following year. Okay, and they even say it doesn't matter what your levy does. What matters is the dollars you're asking for. Because it says even if your levy goes down, you still have to, you still have to follow either the requirements. Well, I'm telling you, I'm going to follow the requirements of LB one oh three, even though we don't have to. I'm going to advertise. We're going to have, we're going to have the resolution. We're going to do it all right, the way that it should be for your taxpayers, even though we aren't required to do that. Because we're not changing our tax requests. Our valuation will be up and change a penny or something. Okay? But, but we're not, but we are not required to have to follow these rules of LB one oh three. Questions at that point? Okay, the thicker packet that you have. This, these are the worksheets. The state doesn't even ask for them. They're just worksheets for you. The first one, it says on the top of the page what it's for. It's for the general fund. And you'll see that the first page is all your expenses. The three million dollar cash reserve. Okay? And on the following pages, it tells you where your cash is coming from. Your beginning cash balance. What you're anticipating in revenue in each, each one of those funds. So in a lot of those places, what I do is I look over at what the audit said we got. I look at what we got this year, and then I have to estimate this third column as to what I think you're going to get for cash. I will tell you this. I'm generally a person who will be conservative on my estimates for cash, so you won't see that I'm going to put more in there than what our audit ever showed. It's the fastest way to break your district is tell people you're going to get more money than you're going to get. And it might happen. I do know one of those cells in there, which is your tax request. If you have an increase in taxes, you're, you're not going to get it all. Because the second half of your taxes come in September, and that's after the end of your year. So if I ask for a million dollar increase in property taxes, I will probably be five hundred thousand dollars short. Okay? Um, I just talked to my son, and he has a, he has a bond payment. And he, he put in his bond, and I said, but you do realize that in this first year, you aren't going to have enough to pay your bonds, because you're only going to get to collect the first half. Because you never had a bond fund. And there was immediate panic, you know, about, well, what do I do? Well, because your second half of your taxes, when you got to pay off your bonds in July, they aren't going to come in. So his, his bonds are restructured. Where his first payment comes in July instead of December. So it takes account for that first year. So just know this. Whenever you have a tax increase, it's not because your superintendent, whoever it is, didn't do a good job. It's because you're not going to get those taxes. So that's one line where you ask for a tax, but you don't necessarily always get it. So the general fund has a lot of lines of summary monies, okay, or receipts. It's broken down even farther than this on our books. There's like fifteen thousand lines of expenditures and receipts. Okay? So the first pages are general fund. And then you'll get to depreciation fund. So if you go back about five pages, you do a page that says depreciation. All of these funds from here on out show the expenses on the top half and the receipts, anticipated receipts on the bottom. So it's pretty easy to follow. So once you learn how to follow those sheets, then the general fund will make more sense. Okay? And if you question, why is that number in there? Look back to column one and see what your audited number was. Because that's confirmed. Does that make sense? So if you say, why did you estimate that? Why did you? It's because I would look at, what did we get last year, which you don't have access to, unless you go back into your board receipts. But you look back at the audit year and just see what your cash was. The next one's employee benefit fund. So on the summary on your budget, these are the lines that I use to generate those budgets. We used to be able to have a contingency fund, but the legislature wiped it out last year. But the contingency fund was basically for uninsured losses. Okay, or unanticipated revenue shortfalls. And the state hated it, and it's gone. So there's nothing in there. Activities fund. You'll see where Jim's expecting to get his money. He manages that fund. He and Jesse and Darren Povar. School nutrition. And then the bond fund. And the page following the bond fund has all the bonds in it. It has the QC puff and the regular bond. So you'll see our bonded indebtedness total debt. Special building fund on the next page. You'll see no tax request. Huge budget. Qualified capital purpose undertaking fund. That's the addition to the elementary. Well, three eight in the bank. And then we'll have another five hundred, so it'll get us to four three. And it's four or five is what we need to be, so next year will be a partial tax out of that point, so. Okay? Co-op fund. We have cooperative ventures. We have one with the county. And so this is where we receipt money, like when we, when we pay the, the two hundred and eighty thousand out of the building fund. It won't come out of the co-op. It'll go to their co-op fund. If we were receiving the money, they said, we're going to give you all that money to do this project, we would receive it in the co-op fund, so it wouldn't count against us. Okay? So the building fund could So the building fund could get money from two places. One is taxes, and the only other place that you can get it from is bond receipts for building. Okay? What gets paid out of the bond fund is your repayment, your principal and your interest on your bonds. The rest, so that all goes to building fund. Student fee fund. We do collect student fees in our school, we have to track them, we have reported them to you. And we actually have one time in the summer when we report out all the fees that we collected from students. We basically have a couple things, one of them is a ten dollar activity fee, which we use in support of the activity fund, which offsets costs for kids to go to activities, okay? And the other one that we have is, is a one-time fee payment for technology. So if a kid breaks their iPad, you know, they basically buy that to help offset that cost, so they don't have a big cost.
So it's the insurance policy.
It's basically the insurance policy. Not a lot of excitement, I like budgets that aren't very exciting. They might be exciting to other people, but. Let's see, whatever pages I gave you. Oh. So this one here is your, not all those pages have to go into the state, it's just this one here that goes into the state. Along with affidavits on your. Okay, Rich, you can have it.
Saving money on the colored print.
But I could raise your budget. Okay, so if you, if you look at this, this is the cover page, shows you you got twenty-five million dollars in debt on the left-hand side. Sixteen, because that was, we, we refunded the two thousand twelve bonds and put them all together. The next page is just a summary of nineteen twenty, exact thing you just advertised. And then it shows a summary of the other two years. We have exclusions for expenditure lids. But our budget never really went up. And so, but we still claim those because we don't want to lose them, we don't want to lose that authority. So there's three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars that we get for voluntary termination agreements and the retirement contribution when they, when they hike that up, so. So there's three hundred and fourteen in retirement contribution, sixty-one thousand this year, and early teacher retirements. LID compliance. We have to be under a dollar five, and you'll see on the LID compliance page, it's pretty small, but we're at a dollar. So we could go up five more cents in the general fund and be legal.
Is that where we were last year?
We were a dollar one, I think, yeah, but. Next page doesn't exist, just go on past it. It's the Superintendent Salary Transparency Act. And then there's a page for correspondence, and Mr. Bravitz and Penny and myself are on that page. The board, if anybody has any questions on budgets, so they can contact any of the three of us. Questions from you, things that you want to see from us, it's, we're pretty fortunate that the numbers worked out the way we had anticipated six months ago. And state aid came in, that gave us that boost.
Yeah, that was, that was definitely beneficial, and, you know, not anticipating, you know, all the flooding scenario south of the river and the loss evaluation there, that was definitely, you know, God sent that we got the additional state aid. Bridges that gap, so. That was good, that was good. Overall, I think, so just keep staying steady on the course and trying to maintain our, our expenses and just like anybody else, just continue to educate, stay within the guidelines and.
It was really important for us, as we worked with administration and staffing and everything, to try to make sure that this budget worked, because we had promised people some things in a, in a bond. And that we really would try to make sure that that levy wasn't affected by the bond passing, and knock on wood, it worked. We, we had strong feelings it would. But if we had gotten cut in state aid, you would have seen an increase, not because of the bond, but because of state aid. But it's difficult for people to see that, okay? And so when, we didn't have to ask for any tax increase across the board, that was really a good.
Yeah, I think, yeah, another point to get on with, with the grants and taking opportunities like that to try to, you know, capture some additional value for our, for our district, that's definitely plus.
And there's a, there's a lot of people who work in the different grant programs, okay? So it's, doesn't just all come out of my office. There's a lot of people trying to make sure we have enough money to do good stuff. We just went down for training last week, and there's an early childhood grant for us to deal with family literacy in this district. And we're one of three schools selected Omaha Catholic Schools, the Arceuses, Salsu and us. The schools that are already in the program are Lincoln, Grand Allen, Lexington. And so, we're working on our model program for this year. And the first year is seventy-five thousand, the second year is sixty, and the third year is thirty-five. But it's a way for us to try to expand our parent literacy, parent involvement, and education, so.
That's speaking, you know, again, we're, you know, I've had kids to school, many others have as well, but you know, that involvement with family, that's a big thing, it really is, it's huge. It's successive, you know, how the kids, and you know, not that they can't succeed without that, but it definitely is a benefit, so.
And in defense of our parents, that's, that's not necessarily the culture they came from, or the education setting they came from, where their kids went to school. And parents might not have been as involved in other countries as we want them to be here, you know, so. Questions over here, Nina, that's your first one going through, I think, so. If you have questions between now and then, or somebody asks you questions that you can't answer, you know, I'm more than happy to try to, try to explain why things are the way they are. Would we have loved to give them a huge tax cut? Yeah, we would have, I mean, but that's not in the cards right now, not unless the state does something. Virginia, I'm anything? Martin? You're good, you guys?
Can I just ask about the contingency fund? That was last year that they took that away?
This year, yes.
This year is the first year. And they, just because they felt like people were not using it correctly, or just because it wasn't, just not being used?
Politically, it was a fund out there that wasn't attached to anything, and people could hide money in it. And I shouldn't say that, that that's the exact, but, you know, all the discussion that went around it, and they said no more contingency fund. Okay, so. But it, the reason it's still in, the reason it's still in the document is because the previous two years could have had money in them.
Sure.
So you still have to reflect that money that goes in your audit. So in two years from now, you won't see that page anymore unless they put it back in. But you still have to have it to reflect the last two years.
Thanks.
Yeah. Same, same reasonable?
Yep.
Steven, Steven took my finance class years.
This is awesome.
But I do want to not overemphasize, now I do, we have great parent support in this community, but when the city stepped up and did what they did, that pushed our project forward. In knowing, I mean, that was huge. And so when you see Jim McGowan, you see the city mayor, because they all had to agree that this is what they wanted to do. So, you get that kind of support?
And absolutely appreciate them stepping up to the plate to help us keep things on target, so. Definitely, you know, a very positive step. And again, that's part of doing things that are right, even though they're challenging. Definitely, good people in that department, so.
Good, okay, I'm gonna.
I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'll second.
So.
I didn't make the motion.
No.
Oh, you were entertaining, oh, sorry, I missed it. I'll make the motion to adjourn in the meeting. I, I didn't listen to you close enough.
You have two seconds, okay?
All in favor, right?
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The opposing. Motion carries.